President of Call Media, the city council will be held in the six-wool conference room, 801 Crawford Street, 5th and 1st Tuesday, June 25, 2013, for the purpose of a public board election. In addition, you may consider a motion to close the doors by order of the mayor. Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Lee?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Randall?
Here.
Mayor Wright?
Here.
Mr. Rowe?
Thank you, ma'am.
We want to discuss, right off the bat, an environmentally friendly alternative for cutting the grass at our city-owned landfill. As you can imagine, we have to cut that grass. We're required to do that by the Department of Environmental Quality. And we have really three alternatives to do that. We can do it in-house. We can contract it out, which would be twice as much. And then we have a third alternative, which we would like to test for the next six months, which is really green, and again, has the least impact on the environment, leaves hardly any carbon footprint. And so with that, Dennis, would you brief counsel?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Before I get started, I want to recognize a few people, because this project has come to fruition with a lot of laughter, and a lot of research, and a lot of work from a lot of people. Henry Strickland is landfill superintendent. You've met him before. Donna Corbus in the back, you know her. She's our recycling coordinator, the face of recycling. In the back corner is Angie Hutchins, and she actually works in the garage, but she's the one who actually came up with this idea in one of our brainstorming sessions. And then Deborah Semenisky's done a lot of research as well. In general services, we don't have problems. We have opportunities. We have challenges, and then they always come up with an opportunity. And as we go through the presentation, you'll see how this opportunity came to fruition. And I'd have to tell you also, to kind of put all this together, I worked for a gentleman for many, many years, and he was a mentor of mine. And he told me often that, he told me this story, and I'll share the story with you real quickly. He said that he was riding down the road one day, and he was going about 35 miles an hour. He looked out his side view window, and there was a chicken running beside him. So he sped up a little bit. Chicken sped up even faster. So he's thinking, what is that? So he speeds up about 55, and the chicken just blows past him and goes down the street and turns up this dirt road. And he said to, I've got to find out what that is. So he turns down the dirt road, goes back to his farmer. He says, you're going to think I've lost my mind, but a chicken just came by me and came down this road. He said, yeah, it is. It's my chickens. He said, what is it? He said, it's a three-legged chicken. He said, people like the legs of the chickens so much, we created this chicken that has two breasts and three legs, so we could meet the demand. He says, really? He said, how did it taste? He says, I don't know. We haven't caught one yet. And the moral to that is, he used to tell me that all the time, because every new gadget that came out, I was the first one that we should try this, we should do this. He said, slow down, slow down. Maybe it's not so good. Remember the old days. So as we move forward, you'll see how that kind of goes together with this presentation. First of all, is overlay of the landfill. And as we've told you before, a lot of people don't even know where the landfill is. This is a really good picture. Here's Riverside Road that comes up here. You cut behind Riverside Road, and this unknown road comes all the way back to this 100-plus, 120, 130-acre plot of land. And in this, there's two permitted sections. This section is permitted. This section is permitted. And this 30 acres or so back here is not permitted. But all of that is within the footprint of the landfill.
Okay. Thank you.
Now, how many acres? It's 122. There's a couple of sections in there that aren't, they're part of the landfill, but they're not actually within that identified line. There's really 130 acres there, but the 122 is what's within that red line. It's a J.
That's all permitted?
No, sir. I can go back. This section is permitted. This section is permitted. And this section, which is about 30 acres, is not permitted. That's the proposed location of the Patriot Cross, and we'll cut across that unpermitted section of land.
Is that about 85 acres permitted? 80?
It's about 100 acres.
Per minute?
Yes. So the 120-plus acres located adjacent to the Crane Island spoil landfill, which is where all the dredge material goes, and that's to the north, and to the south, and to the east of that is the Crane Island Fuel Depot. There's no residential exposure whatsoever. You can see that from the first map that we showed you. DEQ requires regular cutting, and we said a minimum of four times a year, but regular cutting means to be cut when it needs to be cut. So that could increase or decrease depending on weather conditions. And additional cutting, the more we cut it, the more we promote grass growth and strengthens the root system. And in the landfill, the root system is what's key, because it keeps you from washing away the dirt that you're putting in.
And the last part of that sentence, too. Minimizes mosquito population.
And they are, they're rough out there right now.
That's huge for Charleston.
It really is. Now, the properties, and I've talked with Fred, I don't know if Fred, you want Fred to speak specifically about this, but it's zoned preservation government. Do you want to say anything about that zoning, Fred?
The preservation government district is a district that was placed in for open space government uses and not to be used for commercial, residential, or any other type uses. It was an open area that was there. It would be for your shipyard, part of the shipyard is zoned preservation government. And the idea behind that was, when you have an open space, if you were leaving it open, as the landfill is being utilized, but being left open, those were the uses only, not residential, not commercial, not industrial, but like a preservation, open space government. It does allow governmental facilities, governmental maintenance, storage, distribution facilities, and then it says other governmental facilities. So it allows the landfill, and it allows and requires the maintenance of the landfill in a number of different ways. We think that's important for what we're looking at now.
Currently, the mowing, and we've done some review of different types of equipment that we would need to cut the grass there. And I'm sure one of the questions is coming to your mind, well, you've had to cut grass before. But what's happened is we purchased a machine that actually blows seed up on the side of the landfill to try to keep the soil from deteriorating, and that's promoted growth, which is what DEQ wants us to do. And since we've done that, we've got a problem with the slopes and the areas that we can't necessarily get to with a conventional mower that need to be cut on a regular basis. So a slope mower, the cost of that is $160,000. The staff cost, and the life expectancy is 10 years, I'm going to amortize that when we get down to the total. The staff cost, and this is a rough guess for five mowings, is $2,800. The benefits that go along with that, about $840, which is about 30% of that. The fuel cost, which is low, we believe, but it's about $400. The maintenance on that equipment, that'd be $1,000, and our total annual outlay for that piece of equipment would be $21,040, if you amortize the slope mower cost over 10 years. Now, last year, when we began to have a problem, and DEQ said, look, this has got to be cut, and it's got to be cut now, we went out to bid, and we had bids that ranged for cutting that property from $10,250 up to about $17,000. And we had them come in, because we didn't have the machinery to be able to cut the landfill any longer. If you figure that a minimum of four cuttings, and again, the more you cut it, the better the root system becomes, less mosquitoes you have, the total annual cost would be $41,000 for the four mowings. And here's the opportunity that we talked about earlier. We were in a meeting, and we were talking about the challenges that we faced, and how would we overcome those. And somebody said, well, let's put some goats out there. And it was funny for a little while, and everybody laughed. And we came back at our next meeting, and the same thing came up again. So we began to do some research, and we found out that really progressive governments are doing that. And some of the areas...
Progressive government.
Progressive local governments are doing that.
How do we get on that list?
Hopefully, we're going to get on there, Mayor. Boulder, Colorado's doing it. San Francisco International Airport is doing it. Green County, Ohio. Los Angeles, California. And in Bath County, Virginia, the private sector's trying this. Dominion Powers doing it along their power lines. So we're not the first ones to do it, but we're right there at the top, or at least propose to do it. Now, we've done pretty extensive research, and our zoning people tell us that it certainly is something that will be permitted in that area. It's a minimal capital outlay, and we'll talk about what the costs are associated with that in just a few minutes. I had a meeting, I just got back from DEQ headquarters in over Virginia Beach. They are supportive of this effort. They think it's a great idea. They'd like to showcase it after we do it, see how it works, and try to encourage that in other places. It has minimal impact on the landfill operating procedures. We've talked with them about it. We may have to make a few changes. One of the changes that we'll have to do is some additional water sampling, but other than that, there's really nothing else that we would have to do. And a big thing is, reduces our carbon footprint. We're starting to look at that more and more and more, and I think that's an important first step. Goats prefer weeds over useful grass species. They would rather eat poison ivy, honeysuckles, all kinds of trash weeds, and they leave the grass there. Goats require minimal attention. We've done quite a bit of research about what it takes. Approximately 10% of their diet has to be supplemented, and that supplemented diet contains all of the medications and that sort of thing, vitamins that they would need. The reproductive cycle will decrease the cost of the herd, and what that means is that one billy goat can service 75 nannies, and each nanny is capable of having three kids. So our thought pattern would be that we would start out with just a few billys in our herd, and then after we got to the point, we got our herd to where we wanted to, we remove the billys, and we'd have essentially a free herd. And the big thing, and what we're, the problem we were trying to address when we started talking about this, is minimize the annual cost for land maintenance. Now, staff is going to recommend that we move forward with a pilot program. We purchased 10 goats, and we've, I've been personally to two different goat farms. Mr. Strickland's been to a goat farm. We've talked to the herders there. We can buy goats in the range of $40 to $70, probably closer to the $70 range per goat. We're proposing to purchase an acre of portable fence, and put those goats in that acre of portable fence, and then move that fence periodically. And from that, we're hoping to be able to come back with a case study to share back with you and other localities around January of next year. And if this does what we think it will do, then we would propose a full-blown effort of maintaining a goat herd at the landfill to manage our lawn care. And with that, if there are any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them. There's someone from my staff right on one.
Me.
You're full of questions, I'm there.
Who's going to be the goat keeper?
And how many?
We're standing up. We've really had a lot of fun working on this project, but we really believe from the bottom of our heart, it's a right thing to at least give enough, give a shot at.
Is it going to do anything to PETA to be at our door, or bad publicity, that kind of way?
I don't think that if we maintain the goats the way they should be maintained, I don't believe that's going to be an issue, because that's a goat heaven out there. I mean, there's, there really is. And I think, but I think you're right, that we need to make sure that we manage the herd the way that it's supposed to be managed, and that we do it correctly, and I don't think that's going to be an issue.
Do we need a facility to keep them during the winter and all of that, to make sure they're just not...
You need something that's covered and open on both ends. And what we're proposing to put out there is, you've seen the carports, that's a perfect cover for them. And the only thing that you have to continue to do is fresh water. You don't want them drinking out of ditches and mud holes.
Is that our biggest liability there for them drinking the water out there?
I don't know that that's necessarily the biggest liability. It's just something that even if you had them in your backyard, you wouldn't want them doing that. You would want to make sure they had fresh water all the time. And I think that goes back to points you made about PETA. You know, we want to make sure that we're treating them as good as we can, as humane as we can.
I recommend that we do this, and what we would like to have is your consensus. I welcome this, because we need some other old goats, just not me. But seriously, this is, we'll like to try this for six months and see how it works out.
Do you have any idea of the cost starting it out?
Well, the cost is 10 times $40 at the low end, or $75 at the high end.
And about $5,000 in fence. And we have a canopy already, and if there's troughs or those types of things that we need for watering, then we would have to purchase those, but that would be the extent of our expense.
What about the nutrition, 10%?
It's, Henry may be able, I'm not sure that we know exactly what it is. Do you know what the cost is?
$5,000 should roughly cover pretty much everything we need to start it up and do it for six months.
Including the supplemental feed, right?
Okay.
All right.
See you in January.
Yes, sir. Will you be able to catch one, Dennis?
Well, we put tags on, and we have his home phone number, so if one gets out, I'll get it.
Chickens, goats?
Yeah. Never mind.
I was pressing at the creation of what we're going to talk about next, a 30-year contract that will expire in 2018, and that is the SIPSA contract. And what we want to do is brief you on the discussions that are taking place at the regional level that talks about post-2018. I've sent you an email, mailed you that about this. We have on the agenda tonight, on your regular session, a resolution that's non-binding, that we're recommending that you adopt. That keeps us in the game. If you visualize this being a long hallway with 2013 here at the bottom, and 2018 with doors along the side, 14, 15, 16, 17, as we go down the hallway, we get an opportunity to exit at any time on our own, at no cost. So if we want to remain part of the discussion, I think it's important that we do. We need to adopt this resolution, and we'll provide the wise for that. Dennis is going to give this presentation.
Is that our new truck we purchased?
I was going to share that with you, Mr. Mayor. This is one of our new recycle trucks, and it's completely outfitted. The only thing that's missing is the placard that goes in here, which is replaced with, that's what we'll be doing our advertising on. And those trucks are ready to roll. And our cans will start rolling in tomorrow over at Virginia International Terminals. The first four loads will be there tomorrow, so.
On the 18th?
19th.
19th.
18th is a Sunday. And I want, to kind of piggyback on what the manager just said, who would have known 30 years ago, we went into a contract with SIPSA where we'd be paying $125 a ton today? Who would have thought that? I ask you, I don't want anybody to answer this question out loud, but answer it in your head. Would you have voted on that contract 30 years ago if you had have known we've been paying $125 today? Pretty interesting. But the purpose of the briefing today is more to talk about what the regional discussions are, and to bring you up to date. There's two committees that are working. The CAOs, and then there's a technical committee that Judy Duffy and I are working on, that is actually putting the nuts and bolts together for what SIPSA would look like post-2018. And tonight, you have before you a resolution that is non-binding, and I'll reiterate, non-binding. And as Mr. Rowe already alluded to, what this resolution really does is gives us a seat at the table, so that we can move forward with discussions. And that's all it is, and we can get up from that table anytime we want. And I would not stand before you today and say that we should adopt the resolution if it wasn't non-binding. So this being a non-binding resolution just gives us a seat at the table, so we can continue to talk. Current disposal system, and you all are very aware of this, we've been before you multiple times, but I think it's worth going back through again. The Southeast Public Service Authority was created in 1976, and our manager was part of that with the City of Suffolk, and certainly negotiated a very sweet deal for Suffolk. Portsmouth, Chesapeake, Franklin, Alawite, Norfolk, I hope he can do the same for us. Portsmouth, Chesapeake, Franklin, Alawite, Norfolk, Southampton, Suffolk, and Virginia Beach are all members, and those use agreements will expire at the same time the agreements with Wheelabrator expire. The SIPSA Suffolk Regional Landfill opened in 85. It's 833 acres, and 204 acres of that is permitted. And I think that's an interesting fact, that we need to keep a close eye on as we move forward, of how much is permitted, and what we think DEQ might end up doing with that land. SIPSA has eight transfer stations, two convenience centers, and then the RDF tipping floor, which is what we consider our transfer station. All of our equipment, all of our trash goes to that tipping floor on Victoria Boulevard. SIPSA sold the RDF plant, steam plant, to Wheelabrator, and we actually have Wheelabrator's plant manager with us tonight, Paul Greco.
Paul, will you stand up, please?
He's the general manager of that plant. He's turned it around since SIPSA's been there. A lot of us have been over and toured that plant since they've taken it out.
I thought you were the president of Product Civic League.
I'm not, too.
In all processable waste that's collected, those transfer stations are taken and delivered to RDF plant through SIPSA trucks. Wheelabrator uses the waste to fuel the plower plant that provides steam and electricity to the Navy at the Navy Yard. Portsmouth municipal waste is delivered directly to the tipping floor. And we have, and it's important that we understand that our trash is picked up on the street by our trucks, taken directly to the SIPSA plant, and is burned. And other localities, they pick up trash, they take it to a transfer station, then it gets trucked from those transfer stations by SIPSA over to the plant. So that's all included in their cost, in our cost per ton.
And you're still paying the same money, right?
Still the same money that other folks are paying, even though we don't have that transportation cost. And that's an issue that Judy and I are working on now. SIPSA, the 977,000 tons that go to the SIPSA per year, 412,000 of that is municipal waste. And the commercial waste market contracts directly with Wheelabrator, and they don't have the same rates as we have. FY13 and 14 tipping fees are $125 a ton. That's certainly well documented, and you all have seen that in multiple budget cycles. SIPSA's outstanding debt on June 30th, 2012, was $32,700,000, but that must be paid off before the end of the Use and Support Agreement, which is January 24th.
The commercial rate is 42.8. And, you know, the heartburn I have is that they're going out, given the commercial, I know we're under contract, but going forward, the commercial guys, they don't have bonding behind them, they don't have guaranteed payment as the cities do. And we really need to stick together if we decide to go forward with them, but we should definitely use that to our advantage, because the private contractors, they go out of business, they get bought up, they slip through the cracks, late on payments. Cities always going to pay on time, and you're going to have a guaranteed waste stream.
But the municipal collections always supported the private sector, which...
These are all things that get discussed in the technical committee team, and that's, if you all adopt this resolution tonight, we'll be able to bring those issues to the table at these technical committees, and hopefully, we can make that part of our Use and Support Agreement if we move forward with SIPSA in the long term.
Who's that table for? You two guys?
Three of us.
And Judy.
It's me, and Judy, and Dennis.
At the SIPSA meetings, or?
No, not at the SIPSA meetings. The post-2018 is being done outside of SIPSA. SIPSA can sit at the table, but it's not SIPSA-driven.
Who's that table for us, representing the city?
On SIPSA, on the board, George.
And Sharon is an alternate. And then the governor, the governor appointed Tim Oakesman, but he's not appointed, he doesn't have anything to do with the council, but he's the Portsmouth representative appointed by the governor.
These other committees, the CAO committee and the technical committee are, have been appointed by the SIPSA board to begin to look at these issues. They're not appointed by the SIPSA board, I don't think that's correct.
The catalyst for this is the regional planning district. You know, we meet monthly, the managers meet monthly, and so the managers are driving the effort to make sure that we get the right staff people talking about what happens post-2018.
Are there any legal processes or procedures in place to ensure that we follow through according to whatever is agreement is between the participants? I think that's going to be crucial.
And that will be developed. There'll be, if there's a regional waste disposal effort after January 2018, there will be a legal document that will govern that.
Okay.
And that's yet to be developed, because that's a big if. We've got to work to that point. And again, remember, the goal is to come up with one that's a system that's reasonable, that's cost-effective, and fair to all, that takes into consideration...
And we've got a lot of lessons learned from this whole SIPSA piece, for what we've been through, what we don't want to do.
One thing, I mean, a lot of people don't know is, North Carolina is changing one of their laws, they put back, they passed '08 about a landfill in Camden County. They're going to pass a law where Camden County is going to be able to put the landfill there if they choose to. There's a group of lawyers right now in Raleigh trying to get a team together, but my understanding, Waste Industry has a whole lobbying team of lobbyists pushing, no, pushing it through. Chesapeake is fighting it. But if that landfill does come to pass, the waste should be pretty cheap between here and Richmond. So it's really going to have to be up to Wheelabrator and SIPSA to sharpen their pencils to bring us the best deal, and we...
But it's negotiable.
Yeah. Well, let's go to the next pick. Well, there we are.
Post-2018, and looking past 2018, we continue to evaluate disposal options, which include, first of all, a similar SIPSA-like regional organization. The second part would be a fractured regional organization, with the East and the West being separated. And there's some strong possibilities that could happen, because those folks out west, really, they could take their trash to Waverly and pay $28, and they were paying $125 a ton. So you think we were paying a lot. That may very well be the way it looks with the East and the West. And then each community on its own, and going out and determining how we can best dispose of our trash for the long term. And I think, not to get too into it, but this option right here, if you don't know what 30 years out looks like, maybe that's not such a bad idea. So there's a lot of discussion still that needs to be had. While we'll be asking to adopt this resolution tonight, it just indicates your willingness to continue the discussion on a regional solution. And a regional solution does put us out there on our own, you're in it with a whole lot of other players. So that's one reason. It's non-binding, and as I said to you before, I don't think the manager would be bringing this to you tonight if it wasn't non-binding. We can get out anytime we want. If the discussions begin to go in a direction that we know we don't want to go to, we can walk away from it at any time. And I think the third part is what was driving this to begin with, is Suffolk just wants to know that everybody is at the table at this point, because they've got conditional use permit for the regional landfill expansion, and there's a lot of costs associated with that, and they want to make sure that people are serious, at least there's some desire for the localities to do that before they go through that process.
How much more capacity does Suffolk have?
It's huge, Mr. Mayor.
50 years?
It goes on past 100 years in certain circumstances, but there are...
It's got to be approved.
Those circumstances would require approval to expand the landfill, and depends on a lot of what comes out of this technical committee. You know, if they decide to landfill directly, I think DEQ would found expanding the landfill personally.
They got wet land issues.
But one of the numbers is over 100 years.
Well, it's, yeah, one number is 144. And, but it's, you have to look at the internal politics, too. Remember the not-in-my-backyard syndrome. And so one of the reasons why Suffolk uses a conditional use permit process, two things. One, it's tied into the contract. One, it's tied into the contract, so that if SIPSA's in violation of the landfill, that Suffolk has two ways to remedy that. They can go into court with breach of contract, they can shut it down through, under the zoning permit. But just as important, it provides a mechanism for civic engagement in Suffolk as they look to expand. And those, yeah, think about you listening to a conditional use permit to expand a landfill someplace in Portsmouth, you'd have a large turnout. So it's not only a DEQ issue, it's an internal political issue for Suffolk as they look to the future. And they've already had a big pushback from the neighboring neighborhoods on odor. So it's not a given that they can get the full use of those eight-hundred-plus acres.
Right. Mr. Moody?
Thank you, Mayor. Of the current members, is there any movement among any of the members to go it alone?
Not alone. The western jurisdictions of Franklin, Allawite, and Southampton County are looking at the possibility of doing something together, but different. That's the fractured regional alternative.
How will that affect the costs? Too early to tell?
Too early to tell.
I mean, but if you have a hundred dollars and you got seven people, you got a hundred dollars and you got four people, your costs have to go up. I mean.
Sure.
That's economics.
You would think so.
Okay, go ahead, Dennis. And then the last point that we want to bring out, and this just speaks to everything that's been said here tonight, is that we have a desire to make sure that whatever happens, and this resolution states that, is that it's reasonable, cost-effective, and equitable. And that there's not one community that's getting a much better deal than another community, that we feel like that whatever we're paying for our tipping fee is a reasonable cost to pay in the open market. And there's a lot of unreasonable things that are written into our agreement that we have now, so we want to make sure that we spell out in this, that's what we're looking for. And I think some of the other localities have done the same thing. What are the next steps?
Mr. Meeks?
You made a comment, page back, that Suffolk was concerned, that's why they want this, I mean, or was it?
No, it's not a concern, it's just before they dump that kind of money into that process, they want to make sure that there are, that everybody's not out doing their own thing.
Now, for thirty years, they hadn't paid a disposal fee, for thirty years, right?
That's true.
So.
Who negotiated that, you?
But the liner's about five million, seven million per sale.
It's a double liner.
Okay, so let's say it's ten million. But for thirty years, we've been paying, and not taking nothing away from Wheel Obrator, they've done a great job, been a friendly neighbor, Craddock loves them, they love Craddock. But we do have the worst of the deal, versus the landfill and incinerator. And we still pay full gate rate. I'm just opening your eyes, so when we start down this road the next four years, you know, Suffolk hadn't paid a disposal bill in thirty years, and they're concerned that they might have to spend ten million dollars. Well, we've been spending our, we've been paying our trash bill monthly, they hadn't had a trash bill, or yearly. I mean, our yearly trash bill's what, five million bucks?
Four.
Okay, four. Four times thirty is a hundred-and-twenty million dollars.
Four-point-six, actually.
Okay. All right. That's a lot of money.
All right. We're recommending that you adopt this resolution, again, that keeps us in the discussion, we get the ability to opt out on our own. Virginia Beach, Norfolk, and Suffolk have already adopted resolutions. We understand that Chesapeake is scheduled to consider its resolution tonight. And each one of the resolutions is different, but it's basically the same. It says, we're at the table, we reserve the right to opt out. We tailored our resolution to have the key words that Dennis picked out, non-binding, that the final solution has to be reasonable, cost-effective, and most importantly, or just as important, it's got to be fair. So we wanted you to have this discussion in here, so that when you get out in the regular session, you have more detailed knowledge of where we are. All right? Okay. The next item, ladies and gentlemen, is an update. This kind of goes hand in hand with the next two items. We had on the agenda for your last meeting, the budget transfer resolution. We're at the end of the year, this is your last meeting. And typically, in the month of May or June, you consider a resolution to make budget transfers within the budget. One of the items that needed transfer was our payment to HRT. And HRT goes Hampton Roads Transit. And we had that discussion where we told you that Susan Wilson, our transportation planner, found that we've been overcharged for rates, for routes that should have had financial participation from Chesapeake and from Norfolk. We asked that you defer that resolution while we work our way through that negotiation, those discussions with HRT. We met with them, and Fred, you want to give a report on that?
Are you on that board?
Fred and Susan? Yeah. That's our new chairman.
I'm getting ready to be the chair of it.
That's right.
Thank you, John, Mayor Vice Mayor, Members Council. As Mr. Rose indicated, we had as part of the budget transfers a hundred-and-sixty-three-thousand, two-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars for the, what they call true-up for the year twenty-twelve. As we were looking at to make certain the charges were correct, as Mr. Rose indicated, Susan Wilson was looking at it and said, oh, wait a minute, these routes that we're paying for completely are, one is in, partially in Norfolk, and the other is partially in Norfolk and Chesapeake, and then there's a third one that's partially in Suffolk, and Suffolk's not even a participating member now. We met on the nineteenth with Mr. Harrell and his staff.
Ray Amoruso. Ray Amoruso.
Ray Amoruso, Brandon Singleton, and Vince Jackson. At the meeting was Ms. Duffy, Ms. Swindell, and Ms. Wilson, myself. And it was interesting, at the very beginning of the meeting, Mr. Harrell acknowledged that they had not been following the rules of the contract. Very clear, very open, without much discussion at all. The main part of the meeting was spent on, okay, what do we do next? And the first point was, we're not paying you a hundred-and-sixty-three-thousand dollars. U.O.S. money, that's off the books, so we are not going to do that. Second point is, is we are closing the books on two-zero-thirteen. And while we have been paying for the full route, we've also been getting the collections for the full route. So there may be some adjustments, and that's a lot of the information we were asking for at the meeting. Again, the meeting spent time saying, we're gonna need length of route, how much money's been collected, how long has this been going on, have the routes changed, those types of issues. For the future, HRT will have to be going to Norfolk and Chesapeake to say, do you want to continue these routes in your community? And then they will be required to pay for it. How we will get reimbursed, as you know, HRT does not have a rainy day fund. So the discussion then was, how long back can we go? How many years? How much is that money? And then how will that be credited to us? Whether it will be a certain percentage each year as we move forward, or increase in routes, or, you know, those types of things. We are meeting again in about three, three and a half weeks to continue that discussion as we move forward.
The punchline to this is that we're not going to include this in the budget transfer, because we're gonna get, we paid all the money that we're gonna pay to HRT this year, they're trying to figure out how to credit us for this year, and how to remedy the past years.
Mr. Moody?
How far does this go back?
Nineteen ninety-nine?
Nineteen ninety-nine.
The routes actually were modified in two-zero-five, have been increased, and so the length of service miles and hours were different when we initially began this. At the beginning, if you remember, HRT came out of the Midtown Tunnel, made a circle, and went right back in, and there was essentially no miles. And then they have started adding miles to, in time to that route, especially with the beginning of the tide, they extended the service to coordinate and work with the tide. So it has been a progression over the years. It's not, I can't say we're gonna have five-hundred-thousand dollars per year for the last fourteen years.
Do we know what that amount is, at this point?
At this point, for the year two-zero-fourteen, it's six-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand.
I'm not talking about the.
No, the answer to your question is, no, we don't.
It depends on the lane miles, and we don't know when the routes were altered, and we can't do that calculus unless somebody goes through, like Susan, and actually go back year by year and pick up all of that, and then do a transfer.
It's hours of operation, plus the fare box.
And legally, how far are we allowed to go back? Do we know that?
Well, on a written, standard written contract, you can go back five years.
So the report is, we're working this?
Yes.
We've taken out of the resolution for the transfer, we're working on the details. We all have the same questions. How far can we go back? How can you pay us? If you can't pay us, do we get credits going forward?
They can spend three-hundred-million on the tide if they can't pay us back our money. Or lease credit.
So this, the end of the story, we're not at the end of the story yet, so we're still working, and these are very good points.
But we've had representation from our council on that committee from the inception.
Well, yes, but I wouldn't, that, these details don't get to a board meeting like that. It's through staff work that you, and good staff work, like what Susan did, that it's found.
But we discussed it at my last meeting.
Okay.
And we're gonna defer and let them talk before it comes to my meeting. I chaired the operations committee, and so I share it with them, get with y'all, and then bring it to us, and we'll discuss it with the other cities. Yes, sir.
Mayor, on another note with HRT, and I've mentioned this before, a transfer station at the Kerry B. out here, or actually, HRT Ferry, the harbor towers, you know, the only shelter from the weather is that tree down there. And people that, and we're trying to increase tourism, and unfortunately, people having to stand out in the weather, whether it's sunny, whether it's raining, whether it's snowing. I would think that HRT could provide a transfer station.
We'll add that.
There are pros and cons with that. We're trying to talk to folks downtown, and everybody downtown is not in agreement that they want it because of the homeless population hanging around, and we tried to talk with the businesses down there, some of the residents, I've had my HRT staff to go over there and get into some of those discussions, and there's no clear opinion as to what we want there and how we'll be able to maintain it. We are getting a change machine put down there. I don't know if we've identified where we're gonna put that at yet.
It's going at the high street readers.
I would hope we don't let the homeless people drive our policy and do what's right for the general population.
Got it.
Okay, good job.
This leads us to the next item, which is a briefing on the resolution that you'll consider on transfers, and I asked Harrell to come up. But this has two parts. I told you, by deferring this resolution because of the HRT, will we go back and make sure that we're catching all the transfers? We've identified an issue, actually, it's a problem, in our health insurance, and I want you to focus on this piece of paper right here. While Harrell's just prepared. Everybody have this? Roz, you have? The upper table gives you claims per month for the period January through June two-zero-eleven. That's one-point-three-million dollars per month, and you can read the table. What you can see is that the claims went up the first semester of two-zero-twelve, and went up again the second semester of two-zero-twelve, and they're going through the roof for the first five months of this year. We've gone from one-point-three-million dollars per month to two-million dollars per month since January of two-zero-eleven. Now, if you, if one looks at the cost of inpatient claims, inpatient is a hospital stay, and look at the first five months for last year, we were not even nine-hundred-thousand dollars, we were at eight-hundred-and-eighty-four-thousand dollars. For the first five months this year, we're at two-point-three-million. Now, there are three people, if you'll see the little note there, that account for one-point-three-million of that two-point-three. These are three sick people, and I don't know who they are, but I'm not, and I can't tell you who they are, because their privacy is protected under the HIPAA Act. But this is, you might call a bad year. And you get bad years regardless of how you're insured, whether you're self-insured or you buy the insurance policy, you cannot predict just how healthy your organization is going to be. We're gonna put a lot of attention into this. We want to know what's happening, what's causing this trend, what's, for example, is it diabetes? Do we need to have a wellness program one day on, or many days on diabetes? Just what is driving these numbers? And so if we get prepared to develop next year's budget, we're starting immediately on this issue. Because this is more than what we can transfer, this is on your agenda tonight as an appropriation. And remember, we have a self-insurance fund, so the funds are being appropriated from the self-insurance fund into this year's budget. Now, we have stop-loss coverage. Stop-loss coverage kicks in when the claims for any one participant exceed a hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand dollars for that year. And so we know that we'll get stop-loss reimbursements of eight-hundred-and-three-thousand, and we may get more. We don't know how much that will be, but we know as of the first five months, we've got, we're looking at about eight-hundred-thousand dollars worth of reimbursements. That doesn't offset accounting-wise, the money that you need to appropriate, because one side is an expenditure, the other side is a revenue, even though it's a reimbursement. The money goes back into the self-insurance fund. I know this is clear as mud, but.
We've got about three million in that fund now, so if the fund's healthy enough to absorb this, then we'll get the eight-hundred.
It's gonna be ten. It is really gonna be ten. I mean, this is, it's not.
Not completely, not in, but increase.
And this is a work in progress, because when I left Harrell to meet with you, I had given her the task of bring this to closure, that if it's not healthy enough, then we don't have to split fund this with the ordinance. Part will have to come from the self-insurance fund, and part will have to come from the unappropriated fund balance. Now, money has been taken out of the self-insurance fund in the past, some years back. Tony, you want to help with this?
Absolutely.
If you'll come up, please.
So we don't have three million in the fund right now, Harrell?
We do have three million in the fund, but the expected cost of the claims and the expected revenue that we'll get. expected revenue that we'll get, and we have an adjustment that we have to make at the end of every year for something that's called incurred but not paid claims, and that, because our claims costs are trending higher, that adjustment will be higher, and we'll need to increase that liability by about $415,000. And that's, the amount of money that's in the fund balance for the health insurance fund would be, you know, pretty close to adequate to cover just the cash funded claims cost, but with that additional adjustment, because of trends being higher, we're going to need to make a transfer and all that.
And what I want Tony to do is tell you how the fund, I don't want to say raided, but that's a descriptive...
I'll just explain that things moved.
Yeah, okay, please.
All right. I'm sorry. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the Portsmouth City Council. What Mr. Rowe is speaking of, when we went back to look at and review CAFRs from 2009 and 20, it's 2009 and 2010, approximately $6.5 million in, Ms. Swindell will have to validate this, from the CAFRs, had been moved from the health insurance fund, because we are self-insured, and that's why you maintain this balance in case you have a catastrophic year like we're experiencing right now. Since we've been doing this since 1999, we have not had a catastrophic year like this. But we're an older workforce, and there are a lot of things that could be going on, like Mr. Rowe indicated. We have three high claims that we can't speak to those individuals. But with those funds in place, if we had that money in place, what Ms. Swindell would have to do is just to remove money from the self-insured health insurance fund and do the appropriation that way, is my understanding, when we were talking with her this evening, that that would be the way we could handle that.
But several years ago, as Tony was explaining, money was taken from this fund and put into OPEB.
Risk management.
Yeah, but how much was that? Was that as much as...
Five and a half million.
Yeah. And so, if those transfers had not been made, this fund would be even larger than $3 million.
Right.
Who you was that?
Sir?
Who you was that?
Do you know?
It was over multiple fiscal years, primarily two fiscal years related to the OPEB, which I believe was 2010 and 2011.
In that timeframe, about four years ago.
Is this claim, these three claims, still accruing?
Oh, yeah, right there.
I'm sorry, what'd you say?
Are these three claims still active? They still accruing expense?
One isn't, but the other two are, remember.
And we should leave it at that.
So, let me ask you, what would happen if this was happening in the school system, and they're going, and they can't set up a fund, and they have one of these catastrophic years?
They can set up a fund.
They can?
Yes, sir. They can carry, they've got a OPEB fund.
That has $7 million.
They can have a self-insure...
They can have a big fund.
That's right.
You know, that's nonsense to say that they cannot create a fund. They can.
They can.
Yes, sir.
And let me just add too, that this, just because we have an anomaly of a year where we have high costs does not change the premise that it's less costly for us to self-insure than it would be to go fully insured. We're saving the cost of the health insured carrier, excuse me, the health insurance carriers' profit, their taxes, and their margin that they would build in for any anomalies as well. And the other thing that we would see, if we were fully insured right now, next year, our insurance company would be coming back with double-digit increases.
Right.
And instead, we're able to manage our claims, we're able to evaluate trends, and custom tailor any strategies that we may need, such as a targeted wellness program or other preventive measures that we can take to help control our costs. But it is difficult to expect or predict a year where claims costs are running 30% higher than the year before. And our costs for the past several years have been relatively stable, and unfortunately, we've, you know, we've hit a year where we have some, a few very sick people on our plan.
Okay.
Okay.
So...
Thank you.
You'll consider two things tonight. You'll consider a resolution to make the transfers for everything but this, and then we'll have an appropriation of ordinance to cover this.
This.
And with, as I indicated, Tony, Carol, and I have already started the process once we started seeing this trend of trying to figure out and get in front of this. One of the things we want to do, audit may be a strong word, it's not, it's to make sure that we're not paying somebody else's claim. Think about the healthcare industry and how much transaction gets done. We want to make sure that the claims that we're paying are for... I'm sorry.
You're paying somebody else's route, so you might be paying somebody else's claim.
So, anyway, that's where we are. And I'm going to ask Carol to go through the resolution real quick so that you know...
So, are we dipping into the general fund, or do we have it all enough in our fund?
The answer is yes. We'll have to use some general fund money. And keep in mind that these are based on estimates that we feel are, in consultation with our consultant, that they're sufficiently conservative to cover the expected cost. And if we, you know, come in less than that, then we can move the money back to the general fund. But one of the things that we'll need to consider, the council will need to consider from a policy standpoint, is what level of fund balance do we need to target to keep in that health insurance fund to cover anomalies such as this year, where claim costs increase by an amount that we just can't predict?
Okay.
And the other, I'm sorry, the one other related issue is, as we start to address the costs and liability associated with OPEB, this is very much related to this because the cost for, you know, for retiree healthcare coverage is what drives that health, the OPEB cost. And we do have some funds that were accumulated over several years that are sitting in an OPEB fund that we have not come up with strategies as to how to deploy those assets. So, that will be part of that overall discussion with council and the public.
Let me translate, Tony. We need to...
Good retreat topic.
Well, yes, sir, but it is a good retreat topic. The whole question about OPEB, other post-employment benefits, and what should be our policy, and particularly as it relates to medical insurance, because they're treated all as if they're still an active employee. And that carries, as you, if there's a correlation between getting older and having more medical expenses, that means that the active employees are carrying that cost on their shoulders, if I'm making sense. And so, we have, we have that, we have, I've alerted you, and not to take anything from Gary Hartai, but we have the issue about overtime that we're working our way through, and how that is calculated, first, how it's managed, number one. Number two, how it's calculated in our retirement benefits for the two closed retirement systems. So, we have some things that we'll, we'll be working hard on.
You going to run through that resolution now?
Yes, sir.
So, the first resolution is the one that we went over at your last meeting, except that we've taken out the transfer for Hampton Roads Transit. And the resolution is transferring $610,000 within the general fund, so no additional appropriation is necessary. We're just moving money from departments that are likely, that they're coming in under budget, to the city manager's office to cover the severance cost for the former city manager, which was not budgeted, and to cover the increased utility costs, which primarily relate to the courthouse. The second action that council's being asked to take is to adopt an ordinance that would increase the health insurance fund. The planning estimate that we had used in your packet was $1.6 million, but we said that we were going to be fine-tuning and refining those cost estimates in consultation with our health insurance consultant. So, we'll need to change the appropriation amount to $3 million. And of that, in section two, $2.3 million will come from the unappropriated fund balance in the health insurance fund, because you previously had already appropriated $700,000. And then, $700,000 will come from the general fund as a transfer to the health insurance fund.
We were at, like, $800,000. I mean, the number I thought we were going to be at was six or $700,000. We're at $3 million? We need to appropriate more?
That's for the health insurance. We're at $600,000 for the regular general fund budget. That's, you don't have to appropriate anything, you've just got to make the transfer.
Okay.
But because the costs are so much higher in the health insurance fund, there's no money to transfer. It has to be an appropriation. Appropriation comes in two parts. It comes from the insurance fund, but it also comes from the general fund. And as Carol said, if we don't use all that general fund money, it goes back into the general fund.
But what about the stop-loss insurance coverage?
That will end up being treated accounting-wise as a reimbursement, but it's like a revenue. Every time you spend dollars, regardless of where the dollars come from, you've got to appropriate that dollar, even if it's a reimbursement. It doesn't make any difference if it comes from the door, the window, from the federal government, a reimbursement, that money's got to be appropriated, so...
So, that will stay in the fund when it gets reimbursed?
Yes, sir.
$800 would.
$800 would.
Yeah, that's a good point. That's a very good point. It will go right into the fund. So, it, any reimbursements through stop-loss go into the fund.
And that's already been taken into account with these estimates.
Right now, we have $3 million in that fund?
Correct. That was the fund balances at the end of last fiscal year.
And you want an additional $3 million to be appropriated to that fund or transferred?
No, we need the appropriation authority to increase by $3 million. And the fund balance in the health insurance fund will pay for, will pay for $2.3 million of that additional appropriation, and then $700,000 would come from the general fund. And again, we'll only transfer what's needed to cover any overage beyond the fund balance and health insurance fund, so if our...
Seven is the high end.
Correct.
You don't want to run that down to zero.
No, I don't.
And once, once we do all of our accounting with the reimbursement, those reimbursements will go back into the fund.
The reason I'm asking these questions, I know right when this stops, my friend on the back row is going to have some questions. Mr. Mark.
We welcome questions, man.
Well, I hope you understand that when you said $3 million, how you got to it, it's not like we're taking $3 million.
Right.
No, it's $2.3 plus the seven.
Plus the seven, yeah.
So, if you missed that point, then, you know...
And four years ago, if those transfers had not been made, this, there would be sufficient funding in the fund.
Yes, sir.
Okay? Well, this concludes, unless you have, we need a closed session, and George has got the motion.
A move to go into a closed meeting pursuant to the provisions of Virginia Code, Section 2.2-3711, for the following purposes. A, consideration of the sale of publicly held real property in the Churchland area, where open meeting discussion would adversely affect negotiating strategy as permitted under subsection A3. B, consultation with legal counsel regarding a specific legal matter requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel as permitted under subsection A7. And C, consideration of candidates for appointment to boards and commissions as permitted under subsection A1.
Mr. Cherry?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. B?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Ms. Randall?
Yes.
Mayor Wright?
Yes.
We are closed meeting, thank you.